Good morning, it's nine o'clock and we call the Marshall County Board of Supervisors meeting to order and as we meet in regular session on this 28th day of June 2016 at 9:00 a.m. in meeting room number two northeast corner of the courthouse with all three members present. This time I'd invite you to please rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, just been noticed to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairman to read the item from the agenda. The board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and replace a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and a roll call vote will follow. Item number one, approval or amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda, first item being approval of the minutes from regular session of June 14th, 2016. Item three, approved transfer of funds. Transfer number 873, a quarterly transfer from rural services to secondary road fund in the amount of $482,500 but not to exceed the maximum allowed in Iowa code number 331.429 parentheses B. Transfer number 874, an annual transfer from the lost revenue in the rural services funds to the secondary road fund in the amount of $673,000... $673 million?
$673,945.
$673,945, okay. Transfer number 875, an annual transfer holding of $3,035.38 from urban renewal tax revenue fund to low to modern income housing fund. Transfer number 876, a corrective transfer from general basic fund to conservation land acquisition trust fund in the amount of $3,863 for claim number 363004. Transfer number 877, a corrective transfer from general basic fund to conservation land acquisition trust fund in the amount of $2,411.21 for claim number 363450. And transfer number 878, a transfer of $50,000 from county attorney collection incentive fund to general basic fund. And item four, approved claims as audited and authorized the county auditor and recorder to issue payment of same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with all claims paid for the month of June. The June list of claims will be part of the first meeting in July. I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Just a quick note, Mr. Chairman, we get questions from time to time what lost revenue is. That stands for local option sales tax. That money goes towards our 50 percent towards property tax reduction and 50 percent towards our bridges and culverts. That being said, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item number five, Central Iowa Community Services, discussion and possible action on a correction to the 2004 job specification for the community service assistant position. And Jill, would you like to comment on that?
When this position was originally implemented, it was a receptionist position and quickly moved into a lot more responsibility. That was done in 2000 at a pay grade one. I took it back through the personnel subcommittee through the correct process in May of '04 and it was changed to a pay grade three, which is the low pay grade in the county for every... across the board. And I have the documents that it was approved by the subcommittee and then I have this position coming up to replace due to a retirement and realized while working with the auditor's office that it's not the... it hasn't been formally adopted as a pay grade three. Something happened in '04 that that process didn't get finalized, so I'm just asking you to, you know, act on this and make the correction that was actually done in '04 with the personnel subcommittee to make this a pay grade three officially.
Okay, now Jill, when would this take place?
July 1st would be fine or, I mean, return to '04. It's been... the pay grades kind of crossover, so it's... I've been paying within this pay grade or the one and there's really been an issue with that. I just wanted to just try to get it corrected.
And this is a starting base pay grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the three, I'm just looking at pay grade three.
And will the job stay the same or is there any more added duties or anything to...
Oh, there's been constant added duties, but yeah, we're looking at that, so. I'm not asking for a pay grade change for that position other than from the one to the...
Just updated from 2004.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the correction to the community of service assistant position, changing it from a pay grade one to a pay grade three.
David, would we want to put a date in there that it's... that would begin July 1, 2016?
Uh, we can.
I'd make a cleaner probably.
Okay, beginning July 1, 2016.
Okay, I would second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number six, approved personnel action, change rate of pay, Community Services Department, Lisa Soder, social worker, full-time, change rate of pay from $2047 an hour to $2287 an hour. This will be effective July 1, 2016. And we'll open it up for discussion or again, Jill, if there's anything you need to... okay. Okay.
I guess one of our questions, Jill, would be with this, does her working... does that change the things she's going to do? Would that be a higher level also then or...
Job duties.
Yeah.
We're not really asking for a pay grade change. It's a pay change within her pay grade seven. She's a licensed social worker, paid 95 percent by the region, it's in the MHDS region and that's... those are the documents you just signed last time. I'm just trying to get that salary adjusted to...
So her duties have not changed?
They've constantly changed and she's, yeah, I mean, picking up and she's part of a 14-member team of the region of that level. She's one of five licensed social workers out of 14 and this is still not... it's less than the average rate within those 14s.
So we're comparing salaries that are among the 10-county region?
Somewhat, yes, I am. Because, well, because that is, I mean, she's not, at this point, the only one that's at that level, that's a licensed social worker for MHDS in the county and so I am looking at that. Regionally, our money is pooled and so that is the statement of understandings that you signed last time with the region and the governing board sent us as well, so. And I did bring this up to your board or you guys at the January 13th budget meeting. I presented the salary information to you as well.
The problem I have with it is the percentage of increase. And I've always been one that I don't feel comfortable approving that high of an increase and I know the grade levels and things like that, but I know on my other boards I serve on when we get into that.
I understand.
I won't go over what we offer, you know, the two and a half percent.
I understand. I'm asking for something outside of that and it's, you know, I've studied it long and hard and it's still underneath the maximum of a pay grade by seven percent, so, I mean, it just probably wasn't even higher than what it should have been 14 years ago and the deposition has gotten very competitive and I'm asking for an adjustment. There's any other questions?
Any other questions?
No, my only question was the increased responsibility and I understand things are constantly changing.
Right, we are actually, you know, we've met with the jail and tried to provide some connection with the jail for mental health services and stuff, so we're constantly implementing new ideas that she's, you know, taking the control on, so, I mean, it... I can't say that that's the reason this increase is coming by, but it's constant increased responsibilities.
You know, because we've had a lot of pay increases this last couple of years. They've been within departments that have restructured their departments, stayed within their budget, possibly worked with less people and increased because of responsibilities of individual people taking on more and making up for less staffing and that was leading to my question of the increased responsibilities over what had been done, because this works out to 11 and a half percent.
Well, I could, you know, I could have and probably should have brought this at the time we regionalized and things were, you know, down across the region and I didn't, you know, I was kind of... I tried to study things and bring them forth to you when I feel it's appropriate, so.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Anything else, Bill?
No, it is hard. I agree with you, it's hard to look at a 11-plus increase all at once.
These monies are coming 95 percent out of the region.
Yep.
The regional money is supported by the levy that each individual county within the region puts it in. I believe Jill's salary is also supported 95 percent out of the region also. That being said, it's still tax dollars.
Yeah, we...
It's just regional.
Yeah, it's not really a levy on dollars per thousand, it's actually dollars per capita, so for every person within the county, that money would be $22.40 or $0.60, I forget, but $22.02 per capita.
Person, yep.
And that is the same for every county. Didn't used to be.
No, it didn't. There were phenomenal differences before the regionalization.
So it's hard to put a handle on... when the money comes from the region, 95 percent of it, but we put money into the pot, so it... it's hard to do that.
This is a different situation because, yes, it is one of our Marshall County employees, but when it gets right done, but you guys work for the region, but you're under our umbrella, so this kind of sets a different precedent, but I still think we have to be very careful what we do here.
Have we had a motion? On it yet?
Let's put a motion up and we'll vote it as you feel. So at this point, then I will move to approve the personnel action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
No.
Graybenbauer.
No.
Patton.
Oh, no.
All right, moving on to item B, rehire of Richard Moore, Secondary Road Department, temporary part-time as needed at $2049 an hour, effective July 5, 2016. And Paul, would you like to tell us about Nick driving around and John Deere with the mower on the back?
He's doing our roadside mowing that we do on our pave system and we usually would bring him on earlier than this, but we weren't sure if he was going to be able to help us out this summer, but it turns out he is, so I want to get him back on board and put him back to mowing. We've currently been mowing with other full-time employees, but we need to put those guys back on their regular duties.
And there again, that's one of our part-timers that we utilize in the...
Yes.
Just like we do with the snowplow guys in the winter time, so.
So you can have him for 120 days?
Four months.
Four months, okay. And he's done this for us for several years, hasn't he?
Yeah, since before I've been back.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the personnel action of rehiring Richard Monroe, Secondary Road Department, temporary part-time as needed at $2049 an hour, effective July 5, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number seven, Resolution 2016-0027, resolution to vacate a portion of Franklin Street and Lemoyle in Marshall County. This is petition number 840 and we... the portion of Franklin Street lying north of the line of Second Street to the north line of block two dash one in southeast, northeast, section three, township 83, North Range, 19 West and we had... and we have had a public hearing for this and has there been any objections come in? Does anybody here at the meeting have any comments, objections, referrals? The Board of Supervisors would hereby resolve to convey title to the above described property by quick claim deed to Steve Artrip, Alan Crips and Cheryl Hurst. And I believe you guys are here. Anybody here? All right, I would entertain a motion on this Resolution 2016-0027.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-0027 to vacate a portion of Franklin Street in Lemoyle, Marshall County, Iowa, petition number 840, and authorize the chairman to sign documents.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item number eight, Resolution 2016-0028, resolution to vacate alleys in Lemoyle, Marshall County, Iowa, the entire east, west, north, south alleys in block C and Kees addition to Lemoyle, Marshall County, Iowa. At the public hearing that was held, have we received any questions or objections?
None.
None? Anybody here in the audience want to comment? Not hearing none. The Board of Supervisors hereby resolves to convey title to the above described property by quick claim deed to Steve Artrip, Herschel Brown, Cheryl Hurst and Ronald Nelson. The required quick claim deeds are hereby approved and the chairman of the Board of Supervisors is authorized to sign them on behalf of Marshall County. I'd entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the Resolution 2016-0028 to vacate alleys in Lemoyle, Marshall County, Iowa, petition 841, authorize the chairman to sign the documents.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item number nine, Resolution 2016-0029, secondary road project funding agreement with the Iowa DOT. This is discussion and possible action on an agreement with the Iowa DOT titled Federal Aid Agreement for a county highway bridge program project, project number BROS-C064 parentheses 125, 5F-64. Paul, we might as well get you up here and for discussion on this. This is actually 1,100 mile of 320th Street.
Between Benford and Campfield down just off of 330.
Southwest of roads.
Yeah, just off of 330 there. This is our agreement that we normally use to get federal bridge funds through the DOT and this is our BROS money. Any questions? This is our...
Just, we've had this on our...
It really just isn't agreement that dictates what steps we have to do to make use of the federal funds on this project. It'll have the prevailing wages, the federal wages on the... for the contractors that we have to verify and there's several other things we have to deal with to make use of federal funds.
On this particular project, how much is going to come out of the BROS project for the federal money?
It's 80 percent.
80? And how much lost are we using?
The lost would be the balance, so we can usually pay it out of F-B and more lost, so.
Okay.
So we're doing basically no...
No effect to the property tax owner.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-0029, an agreement between Marshall County, Iowa and the Iowa DOT, project number BROS-CO64 parentheses 125, stroke 5F-64, Iowa DOT Agreement Number 1-16-HBP-S-020, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second this motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number 10, service agreement for Marshall County Public Health and Central Iowa Healthcare, formerly MNSC, home care services, discussion and possible action on approval of an agreement between Central Iowa Healthcare, doing business as CI, Central Iowa Healthcare and Marshall County Public Health referred to as CIH, the Marshall County Board of Health and Marshall County provided services to the residents of Marshall County and home care service area. This agreement is in effect July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. I'd entertain a motion on this, if I have a discussion.
Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve this agreement effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017 between CIH Board of Health and Marshall County Services, provided to the residents of Marshall County and home care services area.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, discussion?
Oh, boy.
We don't know for sure this is going to last that long.
We don't know where we're going to be with this mainly because of the... when the 120-day deal with Central Iowa Healthcare comes, they're going to reorganize, they're going to restructure, probably be renamed, and we will be going from a nonprofit, which was MNSC, to a profit program and I think Iowa code says you cannot... public health cannot be involved with a profit.
Correct.
Organization. So then Iowa code also states that it will go back into the hands lap, however you want to call it, to the county. And that's where we're at right now. We don't know what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, we know it's going to happen if it happens.
Even though we're approving this agreement for a one-year period of time, I would imagine that we will probably be told by Central Iowa Healthcare sometime in the third quarter of the year, September or October, that they will be releasing themselves from the other side of the agreement and we'll have to handle this in-house. My crystal ball is cracked and somewhat fuzzy from time to time, so I can't tell you what they're going to do.
Well, one thing about it, you know, as we've been kind of talking, I consider it to be like a conservation, they've got their own governing board.
Yes.
That we are responsible for and the board governs the director.
Correct.
Of that, so I... we may not see any real change other than the fact of the Board of Health, nurse won't be as quite as involved with the hospital as they are now, so.
Yep.
We don't really know what's... we don't know what's going to happen.
I think our biggest change on this will probably be the flow-through on the grants that come to the county in relationship to lead.
Mm-hmm.
Because those get funneled through the hospital and they won't be able to do that. I guess it's going to have to be one of these things, we're going to cross that bridge when we get to it.
But we need... we've got the okay, the current regime to redo, to sign this new agreement for one year and so that's basically where we're at right now with it.
And I recommend that we do sign this for a one-year period of time. You never know, there could be changes on the other end with Central Iowa Healthcare and this will keep us covered for a one-year period.
Right. There's what, is there 60 days we have? Either side has to, if they want out.
They think they got to give us 60 or 30?
I've got the contract in there, but it was 30 and I think we changed it to 60 two years ago.
And we've kind of already talked with the State Board of Health lady.
Yep.
And so they're aware of the situation that we may be thrown into.
Yes, both parties are aware, as is the state Heather Bombay.
Willing to help, that's for sure, Jill. All right, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to Sheriff's Department Extension 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Laurel for law enforcement protection. The City of Laurel agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $6,480 and I entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Laurel, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The City of Laurel agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $6,480.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
The rates on all of these things that we'll be approving for the 2080 Agreements between the smaller communities and the Sheriff's Department are the same. I believe it is $50 per household that has a water meter and $300 per liquor license, so it is a per capita type fee.
Right. All right, motion and a second, roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. Item 12, Sheriff's Department Extension to 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Clemens for law enforcement protection. The City of Clemens agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $3,300. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Clemens, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The City of Clemens agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $3,300.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Item 13, Sheriff's Department Extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Liskam for law enforcement protection. The City of Liskam agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $7,320 and I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Liskam, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The City of Liskam agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $7,320.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Item 14, Sheriff's Department Extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Gilman for law enforcement. The City of Gilman agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $12,900. I entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Gilman, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The City of Gilman agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $12,900.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
A motion and a second, discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. Item 15, Sheriff's Department Extension to 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Haverhill for law enforcement protection. The City of Haverhill agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $14,140.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Haverhill, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The City of Haverhill agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $4,140.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Item 16, Sheriff's Department Extension 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of LaGrande for law enforcement protection. The City of LaGrande agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $23,820. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the extension to the 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of LaGrande, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The City of LaGrande agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $23,820.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
Motion and a second, discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. Item 17, Sheriff's Department Extension 2080 Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Ferguson for law enforcement... Item seventeen, Sheriff's Department Extension Twenty-eight E Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Ferguson for Law Enforcement Protection, City of Ferguson agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of three thousand two hundred and forty dollars, motion, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the extension of the, to the Twenty-eight E Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Ferguson, effective July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, the City of Ferguson agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of three thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Graylenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
That's all the extension, now don't we feel safer in our county, I ju, I just feel so much safer, knowing, knowing the Sheriff's Department has, has got us covered.
Is, are we bound to only approve these for one year, or can we do these for multi-years?
I would recommend one year, just because, just in case there's an influx of people going in.
Yeah.
Or a new bar.
You know.
A new, a new tavern, whatever.
A tavern, or, you know, something else, you just never know what's gonna change.
All right, moving on to item number eighteen, public forum, this is a time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business, other than those listed on this agenda, no action will be taken on any part of these, on any of these topics brought up in the public forum, anyone from the public, yes, sir, you've been sitting there waiting through all these agreements?
Patiently.
Patiently.
My name's Jerry Mimick, uh, eighteen thirty-three Reed Avenue, which is just north of where the new reservoirs are being built for the waterworks, and, uh, I wanted to bring to your attention, uh, my neighbors, I have two neighbors that we spent fourteen hundred dollars this year on dust control, and the, whatever the number was, seventy to a hundred cement trucks, over the last two weeks, that, that came down our road in Hundred Eighty-Second to, you know, obviously pour cement in there, pretty much wiped out our dust control. Now, that's not the main reason why I'm here, the main reason why I'm here is when the bridges are going to be redone, which is, I think, over the, I think it's been delayed now.
Yeah.
Twenty eighteen construction.
Yeah, but there's gonna be, it's gonna be done over two years, right?
Yeah, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, so we're figuring.
Okay, so North Center Street will be closed, the people on the sand road that live on the sand road are gonna be, basically be coming down Reed Avenue and Hundred Eighty-Second and Fourteen, getting into town, so that's gonna create a lot of traffic, once again, so, my whole point being here is to make, uh, the board and, and Paul aware of, of this, and hopefully start discussion on what could be done as far as maintenance to that road, and I've, I've got copies here, I've, I've copied the board on the first letter that's attached, and, and, uh, Paul's responded, basically, to the, to my, uh, to my second letter and said, you know, he's, he's aware of it, and he's, he's gonna have to, you know, they're gonna have to make some sort of plans, but I'd, I'd like to have you guys make sure you get a chance to read that, and, and at least be, you know, proactive in, in doing some sort of maintenance on, on that road when, when the time comes for the bridges.
I, I know in the past, when we've done construction projects that are gonna involve a lot of dust, we have put down some dust control on, on some of the projects.
It's, and this is gonna be a long-term route that's gonna be used, I, my expectation, I expect right now that we'll do full dust control on the entire route out to Fourteen, it isn't gonna be just in front of people's houses, just for the safety of the traffic, we'll probably apply it to the entire route, and it'll also stabilize the surface a little bit as well.
Well, that's, but typically you don't grade that when you put that dust control down.
It's gonna be a different world of maintenance than what we've seen, it will be maintained, and it will be sprayed a whole lot more than twice.
The other issue I have then is, is that box culvert that's, that's, uh, in the road, uh, when the cement trucks, you know, they, they came loaded and unloaded, and that cul, that culvert is so narrow that you, they couldn't pass, you know, one would, you know, if they met on, close to that, they stopped and let the other by, as they were aware of it, but traffic, you know, in the future, you know, uh, that's, that's gonna be a dangerous spot.
We'll, we'll look at that box, but we've got the tools and the talent to, to replace that unit, but, like I said, I just wanted to, you know, bring it to everyone's attention.
That's a good point, Jerry, we thank you, and like I say, we've, we've, we've kind of looked at, and I know Paul's been kind of looking at it, we know we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah.
And stay on top of it, and, you know, I, I guess I got the confidence in those guys that they're gonna, you know, we know for two years it's gonna be, you guys are gonna really be, it's gonna be a different world.
Yeah.
Put it that way, but, uh.
Okay.
We'll, we'll stay on top of it and make it as painless as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jerry.
Four bridges will be replaced.
Right.
Yeah.
But they'll be in a, in a, probably a two-year project.
Thank you, Jerry, thanks everybody for coming up, I know, I'm sure you want to hear about that safety stuff, and now you, you can feel better. Anything else in the public forum, somebody would like to come and address? Our next regular session meeting is scheduled for July twelfth, at twenty sixteen at nine AM, all business to be acted upon at that session shall be submitted to the County Auditor and Recorder's Office or the Board of Supervisors' Office by Thursday, July seventh, two thousand sixteen at one PM, there be no further business to come in front of the board, we're adjourned at nine thirty-six, thank you guys very much, thank you.